Okay. We'll call an order of the regular council meeting, ready to move on to the twelfth of November two thousand twenty-four. Commander Muller, if we could have a roll call, please.
Sure. Councilman Bolton here, Councilwoman Rose, Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Perry, here. Councilwoman Walker.
Here.
Vice President Stewart.
Here.
President Van. Mayor here.
Yeah.
If I can fair and follow my pledge of allegiance, please.
Yeah.
Please stand, available, remove your hats, so. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, and you have established those very authorities to remove peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, through various levels of our city officials, in particular, for this assembled council tonight. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them, one, wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest and issues of our times; two, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people; three, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness; four, confidence in what is good and fitting; five, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement; and six, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved borough of Eddie Stone. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Announcements, Councilman Perry, if I could get you to give us an update on activities for the recreation board?
All I got is nineteenth this month, seven o'clock.
Counsel, any questions or comments about park activities upcoming? Doctor Muller, if you could give us an update on the turkey giveaway, please. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hall.
Um, yeah, so the annual giveaway that Global Containers organizes for our town is going to happen on the twenty-fourth. Um, it's Sunday, I believe, maybe it's eleven to four, is that the time? Maybe eleven to three. Um, but it is definitely on the twenty-fourth, and there will be a still four, eleven to four on the twenty-fourth. It's a Sunday, and we'll be down at the firehouse. So, anyone come on out, they're gonna have those platters that are pre-made, and then they'll also have turkey breasts. And they are giving out more than they did last year. Also, you can see Shoprate, um, Shoprate and Martin.
Thank you, counsel, any questions about the turkey giveaway? Upcoming meetings and events. Our regular meeting for December will be held on December second, two thousand twenty-four, at seven o'clock. Or, I'm sorry, it's a workshop meeting. And then our regular meeting is the following Monday, the seventh of December, two thousand twenty-four. Hold on. Five to December? Five to December. And council will meet in executive session at six o'clock prior to that meeting. And I do apologize, council did meet this evening in an executive session at six o'clock as well to discuss personnel matters. Presentations, Chief Pacheski, if I can give you the honor of presenting our Officer of the Year for Eddie Stone Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. For those who don't know me, my name is Ed Macheski, I'm a chief police here at Eddie Stone. Uh, since two thousand twenty-two, Eddie Stone Police Department has partnered with the Frederick A. Scott American Legion Post, Triple Seven, in Crumlin, present the Officer of the Year. The mission statement of Police Department is to provide leadership to individual responsibility and a commitment to improving the community and quality of life through crime control and public safety while serving all people with fairness and respect. Officer Mark Clark has proven to be a reliable, positive, community-driven officer who excels in performance, initiative, and commitment to professionalism and public safety. His efforts to consistently serve all residents throughout unconditional respects are commendable, and his proactive policing activities are exceptional, having made a hundred and eighty traffic stops, forty-eight arrests, and recovered sixteen of the department's illegally possessed firearms this year alone. Officer Clark continually distinguishes himself as a team player by assisting his fellow officers and openly accepting additional tasks. May people both inside and outside of the apartment benefit from Officer Clark's hard work and service to his community. In recognition of his dedication to the importance of duty, distinguished demeanor, indulgent efforts, of self-improvement, he presents the outstanding qualities which are critical to the department's mission and is hereby recognized as a two thousand twenty-four Eddie Stone Police Officer of the Year. Officer Clark.
If we could have a very quick, three to five minute recess so that everybody can take pictures, we are in recess.
One, two, three. Mike, we need to get in there. All right, get in there. Do you want it this way or long ways?
Suns are great, aren't they?
They are.
All right, now my turn.
I had the opposite.
Actually five.
Bye.
Yeah, pretty nice.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
A great addition to our.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, chief.
Here.
Bye. Good evening, everybody.
I'm gonna go back on the record. We go by nine for record.
Go ahead.
Uh, Doctor Muller will go back on the record at, uh, I was gonna say nine eighteen, it sounded like, seven eighteen PM. And chief, where'd he go? Where'd the chief go?
He's right here.
He's right here. Do you have a hundred percent participation in those shape, no member? Because it looked like they were all sporting beards except for one.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we had one off the track.
Uh, second presentation this evening is from Breaker Simpson, which is an overview of our preliminary budget for two thousand twenty-five, Ms. Stillwell.
Great, thank you, everybody. Thank you, counsel. Um, counsel's been working very diligently with our team to develop the two thousand twenty-five budget. They've done an amazing job over the last couple of years, so they really should be praised it. So, um, so the priorities for the two thousand twenty-five budget, no real estate tax increase, continue to maintain lower sewer fee for the residents, fully fund the police pension requirements, enhance services without additional cost to residents, continue prioritization of safety of residents, and prudent fiscal spending. So, um, counsel worked very hard to make this happen. Our budget accomplishments, um, over the last year, we grew the working capital reserve to weather unexpected challenges and ensure financial security for the borough. Obviously, enhancements to borough buildings and community property, enhance EMS resources for residents, um, for resident health and safety. So, just a quick overview of the twenty-five budget. Um, total income, five million nine forty-eight, one forty-four, with total expenses of five million nine forty-eight, one forty-four. Um, most of the revenue, um, your revenue still comes from your real estate taxes. There are, uh, there is some revenue from the local enabling taxes and then, uh, public safety and intergovernmental revenues, but the majority of your revenue does come from, um, your real estate taxes. And the, your biggest expense, obviously, is public safety, so police protection, fire protection, and then highway, and then funding the debt, so where your, um, biggest expenses. The next page is just an overview of the sewer fund budget and the liquid fuels budget, which also must be presented, um, for approval. So, total income from the sewer fund is budgeted to be seven hundred twenty-one thousand, one twenty-seven, expenses seven hundred twenty-one thousand, one twenty-seven. Um, the budget does include, um, a transfer to the sewer fund reserve for future capital projects, expenses of twenty-one thousand. So, most of your expense in the sewer fund is really for the sewer disposal to help for us. The liquid fuels fund, also known as your highway fund, um, is based off of an allocation from the state. So, the budget for twenty-five is fifty-eight thousand, four hundred, ninety-seven dollars. And the, um, borough will spend that for traffic control, street lighting, and public, um, public work through the streets. Um, so the borough continues to have a strong balance sheet. Um, we've been able to increase the assets. So, for twenty-three, the large increase was really the, the funding from the debt service coming in. Um, so that's why it's so much higher in twenty-three. Right, um, and again, the working capital reserve, so, um, GFOA, which is the Government Financial Officers Association, recommends that general purpose governments, regardless of size, remain, maintain an unrestricted budgetary fund balance of no less than two months of regular general fund operating expenses. And the borough has been able to do that over the last year, so, uh, we're hoping to be able to continue to have that working capital reserve. Which has been really good, too, because we've been able to get, um, earn a lot of interest for the borough. So, this year, year-to-date, we've realized like eight, seven thousand dollars of interest income.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, and then this is just an overroo- overview of your revenue and expenses. So, again, you can see like the revenue increase in twenty-three, that's from the funding for the building comes in. And then in twenty-four, it's lower because we're paying the expenses for the building. So, our twenty-five budget, we have budget revenue equals expense. Um, and as I said, the council and the borough manager and everybody has been working really hard to, um, bring the borough into the financial position that it is, so they should really be commended. And thank you to my team, too, for putting all this together. So, if anybody has any questions, we have to answer them.
And so that the public knows, the way that we were to gain most of that interest is by when we get, um, a grant money in, we put it into that high-end accounts, to gain the interest until they have to be paid out, which helps a lot. It was a great idea. Yep. And the grant money can only be used for what the grant was approved for. So, if we get the grant money in, we cannot use it for anything outside of just the grant work. Right, it just gets held in there, and that high interest gaining interest until it is, uh, to be paid out after the work is done.
Doctor Muller can give us an update on the past month's happenings?
Sure can. All right, so, um, purchase of the trash truck is just about complete. That should be arriving here by the end of the month. Um, we have training set up for the guys who produce. Okay, so, it should be by the end of the month. Um, Pocket Part Grant has been awarded. Um, I'll be getting fifty percent of it hopefully next week. Um, that is for the parkway raise. Um, we're gonna do a work with share account, which is another, uh, grant that we're applying for five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Again, it's for the Pocket Particle Repair Place. And it's basically for like the fishing gear and, um, the, uh, different items that are gonna be inside the park and the storage. That's for the five fifty-four, the hundred thousand is for the permit and per, um, any other designs. Like the house, maybe?
How to do the committee?
Yes, I don't know, I, I think we should have a few people from.
I mean, I think we should put it on our Facebook page and on our web, borough website, um, that people can volunteer if they think to be a part of it and see who we have that's interested. And then I think there was a couple of council members that had expressed interest already.
Right.
I was one of them, Rachel was one of them, and Bill was one of them. Ray.
Right.
Kim Randy, I know there was a few of us, and I think the mayor wanted to be a part of it as well, no? You don't have to be.
But we, we do need.
Residents.
Residents, okay.
Input, ideas, input.
Right. All right, so, not just these guys up here, it's the residents. What they really want.
Right, we have a couple of ideas. Each of us are thinking in different directions, and we need the residents' input to think of what would be best suited to.
Right. Okay, the final thing is the RAPP, that's the five hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, we talked to, uh, last week. Uh, there's a few items we need to put in for that, and hopefully we'll be getting the first half of it in the month. Just have to go back into the click and account. Thank you.
I was being, usually saying, does anybody have a question, but I get like.
Does anybody have a question?
So, just to clarify for the residents, the purchase of the trash truck, the trash truck is not going to replace the larger of the two, the trash truck that we currently have. It's going to be a smaller trash truck that will replace the Red Fox truck that we've been using for years, so that will no longer be a left of trash loads. And our regular trash truck.
Right.
And then the Pocket Part Grant, um, that, uh, Doctor Muller was just talking about with the five hundred fifty and a hundred thousand dollars that he's asking for, they are not matching, which means we put no money towards any of that money. That is fully free money that comes into us to try and do some of these things. Uh, some of these grants are matching, so in terms of clarify that they are not matching, we are not paying any towards any of that. And those are the grants that we use and put in the pay account until they're ready to use. There were many that so much interest on. And then the RAPP, just as a reminder for anybody that's newer, um, the RAPP funding, that was for the renovations of this building.
Any other questions? Moving on to public forum of the public, if anybody has formed a board, if anybody likes to address counsel through public forum, now is the time to do it. Yes, ma'am. Could you state your name and your address, so Doctor Muller can capture your record?
My name is Brenda Williams. My address is seven nineteen Civil Avenue. And what was that directly you mentioned?
You've gotta write, name and, name and address, that's it.
That's it.
Name, address, and get it out of your mouth.
Um, I've been living here for seven years. And it's the worst and most racist place I've ever lived in my life. And I've lived in many places, from Pennsylvania to. And I'm here before you today because I know you should remember my name. You may not remember everything because I've been emailing you all for at least two years, out of the seven years that I've been here. Finally, I get the chance to have some relief from one of my neighbors, white neighbors, who have been sexually harassing my daughter. And I've been letting the police know. Yes. Chief wants to, she actually knows, because I've been emailing him, too. Every time he come outside, some of them or a whole family has come outside. They sic their dog on us. And because we share a fence line, when their dog jumped up on the fence, where our pathways are, we smell his breath. And I've been having problems with neighbors on both sides of me. Now is a chance for me to put up a privacy fence to get some kind of relief. And the borough enforcement is making me jump a whole lot of hoops to get it done. A privacy fence won't resolve everything, but it will allow us to be coming in and out of our yard. And as we walk with the path walk, we won't have to see children staring at us with their parents' cell phone, recording us without our permission, doing something they don't need to do because they had a recorder on us from, from the beginning when we moved there. So, why come out with your cell phones to record us, to get in our faces? Their children are doing this. It can be at ten o'clock at night when most kids are in bed at nine for school the next day. And because it hasn't stopped, it hasn't slowed down. And I've gotten to a place, I don't even wanna call the police because in the hearing that we had, uh, for a ridiculous matter, we were pulled into court. And it was dismissed against us because, you know what, we were in the right. But because of what we heard from a reliable source tell us that the police say that you're calling them too much. So, now we're back to ignoring them, of trying to avoid them, but we know that's impossible. They know it's impossible. But they can never do nothing about it. We need this privacy fence, like we need the porch fence to stop the other neighbor from putting her urine on her porch, spitting on her porch, leaving her spells on her por- porch as she boasted that she was a witch, and I had to look at a pentagram on one of her pillars facing me. Therefore, now we need the privacy fence. I'm ready to get this done, we're far ready to do this, this has got to get done. I have this. And it says that within a hundred eighty days, we have to start the building of the fence. But we have five years to complete the process, which will be August, uh, twenty twenty-five. But I was told that we can't use this. Another hurdle because it wasn't started within a hundred eighty days. Now, in a hundred eighty days when this was given to me, it was COVID time. And it was very difficult to find anybody to follow through, to come and look at, uh, our property and see how, what kind of fence we wanted and so forth like that. And the few that did come, the, the, their prices were skyrocketing because of COVID. Now, we're ready, we got, um, the contractor, we're ready to rock and roll, and we can get it done. I'm gonna tell y'all now. Of course, it can only take us so much. If something happens, if blood gets shed because police force refuse to continue to do their job to protect and serve, y'all gonna remember all of this when it makes news. Y'all want me to say, we didn't.
What is preventing me from getting a fence?
He's telling me, the, um, your enforcement, Muller, that we can't use his permit.
So, that's the only thing preventing you from getting a fence?
That was one of the only things, but right now, that's where we are right now.
What are the other things? Are you replacing with the same sized fence?
We're, we're replacing it with a six foot fence.
So then in the ordinance, you have to follow the ordinance that we have already had made that he has no control over.
Well, I was told by him that it could be six feet.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Alright, so what you wanted to do is say. Privacy fence and put it next to chain link fence. Now you're having problems with your neighbor. And what happens now is the grass is going to grow in between the two. And now your neighbor's going to complain to you and to the borough about the grass. All I suggested was. Replace the fence.
And I have no problem with that.
Then that's all you gotta do.
I hope that's not even an issue where we talk the email about this.
Alright, that's what I told you you needed to do.
But the issue now is that this cannot be used.
No, but you, you're.
According to Jan.
Exactly. We're in the UCC, it cannot be used after a hundred and eighty days.
And the UCC is the Uniform Construction Code, it's a state of law. That we follow.
Right, and the thing is, is that your contractor already applied. When he applied to put the fence next to. The, the chain link fence, and I told you to change that out and put it to where you're just replacing the fence.
Okay, you didn't tell me to tell the contractor that, that he wrote it down that way. There's no, nothing in the email telling you that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Alright, but I keep telling you that that's, it needs to be done, so you need to tell your contractor, that's what needs to be done.
Well, you know, you have his email in front of me, you could have told him that too.
I'm not, I'm not you.
Well, you could have at least told me that, so I could have told him, but.
I sent how many, every time.
You need to stop.
Ma'am.
This hurdle thing that you're doing.
May I, ma'am? Every time I send you something, ask you for something, you, you reply back. How racist we were.
You are.
And I am not, okay, I am not racist, but.
I've already listed until done since I've been here in your department. Where are the black people in the city council other than the mayor? Where are the black people in the police force?
Vote for Nick Jones when he was running, he was another council member that was of color.
Uh, Dr. Muller.
Where are they at now?
Where exactly are we in the process of the permit?
Well, let's get back to this, this permit, this fence.
The, the permit that she's done, is that an expired permit? She's got to get one renewed. And I know that fencing is, uh, one of the more difficult permits to get because unfortunately you do have to get a sign off from your neighbor.
Right, but we said to, we, we know that.
Okay, so, so we've waived that requirement?
As long as she's replacing.
So does she have, does she have a permitted hand to build this fence or not quite yet?
Not quite yet. All she has to do is have that changed in the permit.
So that's something that could be done.
Yeah, he's, he's.
Yes, in a matter of a few minutes.
Yes.
Has the, has the fee been paid and everything?
Um, no. Is the application fee has been paid? They didn't sign off on the permit yet because of chain link fence.
Okay, so she needs to get a price from the, from the contractor to remove the chain link fence. You add that into the price to install the new fence, then you can calculate the, the, the cost of the permit and.
Right, so I'm gonna have to go, I mean, the contract is. It's on that.
Are you, are you on? Are you on the contractor's schedule yet or are you, the contractor's probably until you have the permit?
No, I'm not on the schedule yet, he's been waiting for things to get straightened out with these people.
And he did, he fixed.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
He was missing his insurance, he was missing, his insurance was expired, he was missing the PHSC, stuff like that.
Okay.
He fixed all that, he approved his license.
Okay, so the contractor's license is approved?
Yes. Yes, we have rules that we have to follow. You just have to get a price on the removal of that fence and.
I have a price.
Include with the removal of that one too?
I don't have that, but I already have the full price of what it's gonna be for the privacy fence. It's gonna be, when it's gonna last for a long time, because the people that live next to me is from out of hell. And I, I want someone else to be able to benefit from that. Because that's how bad it has been.
Do you have time in your schedule to stop up at the borough hall within the next day or two or three? Get the. Cut the i's and cross the t's so to speak, so that.
Yes.
Dr. Muller can issue the permit?
Yes.
I think we can have this taken care of by the end of the week.
Okay. Yeah, cause something needs to be done, this is not right. This is not right, this has affected me and my daughter and my grandson. My grandson has autism. Because they let their dog run out the house one day as we were loading up to get in my van. My grandson almost ran into the car, in the street, in front of the car. Because the noise of the dog barking, or all this, what that he was doing scared him so bad.
Alright, well let's get this all squared away and hopefully this will resolve your issue, I hope.
I, because it's getting cold and after walks, they're not gonna be digging around. And I've been pushing this for almost a month.
Alright, well you can stop up in the next day or two, right?
No, contractor, this is online.
Oh, so the contractor can fix it, you don't even have to stop up?
Yeah, just have the contractor fix it.
Have the contractor edit it online. That's all.
Okay, you're still gonna need to issue the permit before they start work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause once he fixes it, right, it just changes the cost, then he has to pay for the permit, and then it's automatically. How soon can you get that go? Contact your. If he wants to do it nine o'clock tomorrow morning, you can have the permit.
It's all electronic outside. Doors and doors are reused and all completely electronic. Alright, sounds like it's gonna get resolved quickly.
I agree so. Because this is seven years of living like this and no relief especially from that side. And no one should have to live like this. You know? If they're, they're, it's like. You're being forced to protect your family. In a way that. I never would imagine I would have to. And I'm a peacemaker, I wouldn't keep.
I would suggest you get cameras too, that would help you.
We got cameras all the way behind our house now. And we've caught them doing some weird stuff.
Yeah, well, that's not illegal.
We showed the videos to the police, they don't say anything.
As long as you have a.
So, but everyone here, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, your president, vice president, Mr. Stewart, thank you so much, and we do appreciate that. Um, you have, all have a good night, thank you.
Any other public forum? The best report, the treasurer's report for Burke and Simpson, please?
I have a question, the fence is that, front yard, backyard? Side yard? Wanna go down that road, fence and then front yards?
Hi, good evening. Um. In October, four hundred thirteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars of deposits were received in the Sharon Bank General Depository Fund. Federal general fund expenditures of six hundred ninety-one thousand twenty-five dollars were dispersed, which included payroll of two hundred sixty thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars. And a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the firehouse printable loan payment. As stated earlier, year-to-date interest is, is, um, eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Significant balances include. The, uh, general fund and depository counts at Sharon Bank of a hundred thirty-six thousand five eighty-five, one hundred eleven thousand six hundred fourteen dollars respectively. Sewer Piggott, six hundred fourteen thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. The working capital account, one million five hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, and Piggott Capital, three forty-three, six hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, all bank accounts of which we are aware have been reconciled through October, thank you.
Dr. Muller, code?
Hang on one second, can I just, um, clarify for you, um, the address she actually lives at was my grandparents' address for more than three decades.
Seven, seven something?
Seven nineteen Seville, and that fence has always been there in the front and the back, she's just replacing existing fence. Um, but it's gonna be six foot all the way around, in the front and the back?
Yeah, just the side.
Just along the side that's not attached to her? These are twins. So the, I, I was assuming the walkway is the one that's on, that's not attached to her that she's talking, because the walkway goes along the fence there. Against the house that she's not attached to.
Yeah, Mandy, I thought she said the seven hundred block of the.
No, 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 but that's why I want to clarify for you, it's not something we're allowing, she's only allowed to replace existing fence, yeah. She's not putting up anything now. Thank you.
Dr. Muller, code please?
Sure, uh, total inspections for June was sixty-nine. Top four cores was two. Work permits issued, twenty-one, contractor licenses issued, second. Rental licenses issued, seven, main inspections were three, two lateral inspections were five. Gold brought in was thirty thousand twenty-nine dollars.
You wanna flip a coin on engineers' report?
No, just go ahead.
You got it.
Alright, engineers' report, uh. Pursuant to council's directions, uh, J. P. Kelly have arranged for a phase one environmental study to be completed. Phase one has several environmental pits. They're working on, they're working through ramifications of each, and will be scheduled in phase two as soon as possible. So I know, um, council already approved the money for phase two. And industrial highway, we have a team meeting with African engineer to discuss concerns of council.
Dr. Muller, is there a fire EMS report? I looked through my package, I need to see one. If you can let the record reflect that we have no report for the month of October, and we'll ask the fire company to submit in October, November of our next meeting. Dr. Muller, you're on a roll, health report?
Health report, uh, two I's, or two places were inspected, McDonald's and Porta Valos, and both passed.
Chief Lucheski, uh, police report, please.
Police report for October, uh, for October twenty twenty-four, five hundred twenty-one to the public service, seventy-five.
Assistant, anything to report this month? Action items at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October seventh, two thousand twenty-four, which is our workshop meeting.
No order.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Walker, a second from Councilman Bolton. Council, any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously. Entertaining a motion to approve the minutes from the October twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, which is our regular meeting of council. I entertain a motion?
Sure.
I have a motion on the table from Councilman Bolton with a second from Councilwoman Walker. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion passed unanimously. Council entertaining a motion to approve the minutes from the November fourth, two thousand twenty-four workshop meeting. I'll entertain a motion?
Sure.
And a second? I have a motion made by Councilwoman Hall with a second by Councilman Bolton, any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Council, this time I entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report, which includes back reconciliations for the month of October, two thousand twenty-four, as presented by Burke and Simpson.
Sure.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Hall and a second by.
Second.
Councilman Bolton. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed unanimously. Council, this time I'll accept a motion to accept the VCO report for the month of October, two thousand twenty-four, as presented by Code.
Sure. Seconded.
I'll recognize Councilwoman Walker as making the motion and Councilwoman Hall as making the second, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Council, this time I'll entertain a motion to accept the engineers' report as presented by Kelly Engineering for the month of October.
As presented by Dr. Muller for.
We'll say as submitted, as submitted by Kelly Engineering. Motion? I've heard Mr. Bolton make the motion, and a second? Ms. Walker makes the second, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passed unanimously. Council, this time I'll accept the motion to, or I'll entertain a motion to accept the fire report for the month of October, two thousand twenty-four, as submitted by. We don't have it.
And we don't have the next one, which is EMS report either.
So no fire report, no EMS report for October. Council, this time I'll entertain a motion to accept the health report for the month of October, two thousand twenty-four, as presented by Dr. Muller.
So order.
Motion by Councilwoman Hall, second by Mr. Bolton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Council, this time I'll entertain a motion to accept the police report for the month of October, two thousand twenty-four, as presented by Chief Lucheski.
Sure.
I'll recognize Councilwoman Hall as making the motion and a second by Ms. Walker. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Council, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary budget for two thousand twenty-five and providing Dr. Muller with permission to advertise accordingly.
Sure. Seconded.
I'll advertise. I'll recognize Ms. Walker as making the motion and Ms. Hall as the second. Counselors, are any questions? Comments, concerns about the preliminary budget for two thousand twenty-five? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Council, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve Borough Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash sixteen, which is the supplemental for the statewide local share assessment grant. As presented by the Borough Manager, this would be the grant for the pocket park along that East Stone Avenue. May I have a motion?
Sure. Seconded.
Mr. Bolton made the motion, seconded by Ms. Hall, council, any questions or comments before the call for action? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Council, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve Budget Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seventeen, which addresses a pay increase for the tax collector. As presented by Councilman Bolton, this time we'll entertain a motion.
Sure. Seconded.
I'll recognize Mr. Bolton's making the motion with a second for Ms. Hall, council, at this time, any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in.
The first increase in two thousand thirteen.
Any other comments? Questions?
I, I'll, I'll just clarify so that way everybody, everybody understands, um, since we went to a usage on the sewer. Where, which lowered sewer feed for all the residents. Um, has given the tax collector, his job is now like twice the amount of work, if not more, because he has to calculate every single property's sewer feed. So that's the reason.
We only thought, we thought it was fair. And coming from the sewer fund.
It's coming from sewer fund now.
So, and we can only use sewer fund for sewer things.
Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Council, it's our pleasure on the motion to eliminate the monthly workshop meetings, you want to table that? I will cross that off of the list unless anybody has any objections. And the last motion this evening.
Table to hire the full-time.
Council, any objections on table in the motion for the hiring of the full-time Borough Manager? Is there any other action that needs to be taken before council this evening? Not hearing other, any other?
Make a motion for a germ?
I have a motion from. I have a motion for Ms. Hall to adjourn, with a second for Mr. Bolton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion being adjourned.